I'll call meeting for everything 7:00 P.M. This regular board meeting of June 11, 2024. And although the two managers are absent, we're not expecting any remote attendance.
Correct.
So we'll move through that. This is the agenda before you.
Move to accept the agenda as presented.
I'm on second.
Moved in second. So do a roll call, start with the program.
Aye.
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 Pass, alright. So then we're going to move to public comment. Is there anyone available for public comment today? I'm seeing none. We'll move over to new staff introductions.
With staff here, go ahead.
Yep, can we just mark if you want to start, and then Savannah can go next.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to come before you tonight and introduce to you Bridget Rubens. Bridget is our new digital graphics coordinator. Basically, anything that goes out digitally, Bridget is in charge of. And anything that needs to be printed on paper or silk stringed on shirts, Kelsey Cutwright is in charge of. Bridget comes to us from the University of Illinois, where she worked in marketing at the Illini Union Bookstore. She graduated with a bachelor's in fine arts with concentration in printmaking. And her coursework focused on skills including photography, Adobe software, illustration, print design, graduated with honors. So this is right up her alley. And she made a lot of digital ads in the Illini Union Bookstore. She is also proficient in photography, and she has also entered into some art shows as well. So she is very much, her skills very much align with our vision and our hopes for this new position. And one more thing, do not even think about playing her in rugby. She was on the U of I women's rugby team, so yes. But Bridget, we'll just let her say hello to you and what she's hoping for this job.
Hi, everybody. It's great to be here. I'm excited because I grew up in town, going to the parks. So I'm ready to use my experience and be part of the team.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Hello, good evening. I am here to introduce our new environmental education coordinator, Kathy Schneider. And Kathy has actually worked part-time for the Urbana Park District twice in the past. So I can let her elaborate on that. So this is replacing the position that Chelsea Paul was in. And so the scope of the position, particularly right now in the summertime, is implementing the counselor and training program at Nature Day Camp. Camp Fresh is coming up, that's our teen camp, three weeks in July during the school year. A lot more school programs after school, splash stuff. And then Kathy is also responsible for the community organic garden programs, as well as our liaison to the Solidarity Gardens Cooperative. But I will say that for now, it's been a lot to jump into. And so Nicole and I are still kind of running the day-to-day of the garden plot management for now. But Kathy went to Fresh Crew today, so that program's going well. And I'll let Kathy take it from here.
Hi, everyone. I should say hi again to some of you. Yeah, I was at Urbana Park District a long time ago at a need of purpose for some part-time work. And then I was out, and then I came back to Phillips Rep for a short time. And now I am back after working out at the Champaign County Forest Observatory District, where I was leading education programs and things like that. Yeah, it's really exciting to be back in. We've been in the community now, I think, for 20 years. We've lived here, my kids have grown up here. So it's exciting to give back to the community that we've enjoyed as my kids have grown up and be able to be a part of that.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Glad you're all back.
You have a welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So then we'll move forward to UPDAC appointments.
Great, we have first item there. We have two residents that have agreed to serve on UPDAC, Eusebio Prisceno and Selena Harper. So we're very excited about both of them joining UPDAC.
I move to approve the following candidates, serve three-year terms as part of the 2024 to 2027 class of the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee. Candidates are--
Eusebio.
Thank you. Eusebio Prisceno.
Prisceno.
Prisceno, thank you, and Selena Harper.
Second.
Moved in second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item for UPDAC is a reappointment of Darius White. Darius filled a previous slot for us and now has opportunity to come back and serve a full term. So we're appreciative of that, and his name is Emporiaus Wells.
I move to approve the reappointment of Darius White to serve a three-year term as part of the 2024-27, 2027 class of the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee.
Aye, second.
Aye.
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 That is unanimous. Okay, so then maybe we'll go through our general reports. UPDAC advisory meeting report.
Ashley could be here with us tonight, and I think her reports are in the packet.
Okay. And so then we'll move to the consent agenda. All action and information items appearing below are considered routine. The board shall be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, the item shall be removed and discussed separately. Commissioners have had not made review of these items prior to a board meeting. So is there any items on the consent agenda that the commissioner wishes to discuss?
Cedric, would you mind listing them?
Oh.
Yep. We'll refine them.
No worries. So either approval of the minutes of the May 14, 2024 annual regular board meeting, the monthly reports that are the administration, planning and operations, and recreational report, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts lifted, listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payment.
I move to approve all the actions on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an anonymous manner.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, start with the program.
Aye.
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 That is unanimous. So then we'll move on to regular reports and start our financial.
Thank you. This is a quiet month, this is going to be great to talk about. Especially after the last, woo, get it here. We'll begin with our revenue and expenditure reports. These are revenues and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unith results for one month of this new fiscal year, ending on by 3/1/2024. Page one is our all funds except our capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period, $1,346,107, noting that nearly all of that is from our first tax distribution that we received on May 30. Then the expenditures here are $804,396. No new unusual conversational pieces there. This does give us a surplus after one month, meaning an excess of revenues over expenditures of $631,711. Page two, this is the capital fund, capital improvements fund standing alone. Revenues here, $3,800, which is completely 100% donations. And expenditures listed here, $190,181. This gives us a deficit, actually, of $186,381. Some three is all funds district-wide. Here again, just noting bottom right, our ending fund balance of all funds, The remaining four are our major funds, general fund, recreation fund, museum fund. And the last page of this set of reports is the UIAC number pool. Any questions on that one? Great. Our next set of reports, the treasures reports. This is the amount of cash the district has on a single day as of 5/31/2024. All 25 funds are listed down the left-hand side, where all funds are either held or invested, listed across the top, noting in the bottom right that investments as of 5/31 totaling $14,273,776 and 2 cents. Page two, the top section here lists all of, all the funds that we have actually invested in interest-bearing accounts. So of that $14,273 listed on page one, $11,975,645 is in investments. Again, grateful that we were able to take advantage of the great rates because almost everything that we have is, you know, well above 3%, almost all of them in that 5 to 5 and a quarter. So we're still looking good with some interest rates. So any monies that we're putting together, we're putting in and lathering them out, so. The bottom page, page two, the bottom section, is the inter-fund loans. There is no activity here during May. And then page three is the list of distributions for the month of May. This is all vendor payments, which agree with the accounts payroll reports out of the consent agenda, and then all payroll. Total distributions or dispersments for the month, Again, 1.3 million of that was for capital improvements. Ironically, that same number two months in a row. And this wasn't through the whole pay period, so that gets our numbers up a little bit, too. I present to you the treasures report for audit.
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Moved in second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Capital budget.
Yep, moving on to capital budget. This one's going to be kind of fun to go through. I use that term loosely. I try to make it as easy to read as possible, but for this month and at least next month, you know, we're going to be looking at, always looking at April again because things will get posted back as we're moving through the end of our fiscal year. And so I was trying to decide how to best delineate that in these reports. And color coding was about all I could come up with.
How much did you suggest of your color?
Yeah, I have to explore my color wheel in Adobe to see if I can find something a little more diverse. So anyway, I, we'll walk through these, and I think the easiest way is by page, I'll do the April ones first and then talk about the main ones. But essentially, here on the first page, the 2019 May capital budget. For the month of April, we're looking at the orange numbers. So we have $109,177. It was expensed to Open Road. This is listed under the Crystal Lake Park improvements. This was for construction number six. Some of this money is across a couple of budgets. Actually, there are several of these that, as we clear out some of the older stuff, you know. So they're going to straddle some of these several budgets in one period. We have $795,561 listed at the bottom here, expensed to Core for number 13. And $142,000-- $142,95 to H2I Gym.
The gym, H2I.
Gym equipment.
Gym equipment. So that's split in a couple of different places here as well. And then we have $146,160 using DCO grant monies to help cover the Core 13 bill. And we have $92,712 coming out of the general fund transfer specific to Health and Wellness to help cover that H21 gym equipment. So it was bond money as well as general fund transfer to cover that bill. Then for the month of May, we had two expenditures, $20,980 was expensed to American Dowell. This was for the monument sign for Health and Wellness. And that's coming from bond money, and this is the first of, I don't know how much the bill is, but this is for number one of that bill. And then $2,500 was paid out to our artist Langston Alston for mural. This is our second payment to him, I think, of three. We've got one more payment to him for that.
The sum is close to $30,000.
Is it? Next page, 2024. Looks like we just have no activity in April in this budget, but we do have two. We have received $3,800 towards tributes and donations. And we did, in this budget, also purchase two new mowers. And actually, the mowers themselves were $71,300, or $237, but we traded in two older models, and that was for a total of $37,500. So that net effect, for the two mowers, puts us at $33,737. 2023 budget in April. At the top here, these are, again, using up some funds. But the construction crew projects in April, $13,000, it's like $13,000 was expensed for some supplies. In May, it was $458 for construction crew supplies. And then a direct small equipment, $2,870 posted table for some soccer balls. 2022, this is the 21. So trails project, we're looking at the orange numbers first. Trails project, $31,623 was paid to Mid Illinois. This was for a portion of the Prairie Park construction bills, number one and two. Jumping down to the bonds line for Meadowbrook Playground, that's the $39,170. This was both a design bill, number three, and a construction bill, number one. Down to Meadowbrook Park from grant, OSLA grant, $70,794. Again, design number three, construction one and two. And the last line in this section, the Crystal Lake Park Broadway from ITech Grant, $4,070 was paid to their grant for construction engineering, number six. Then, looks like we're up to the May postings. Back at the top again for technology. This will go across two capital budget years. $3,218 paid to Pure I, who is our new website developer, and this was part of the down payment. This is where some of that was taken from. Again, Meadowbrook Playground from bonds, $27,425. Three vendors totally involved in that number towards playground equipment. Dropping down to the vehicles. Where the dump truck line is, $15,687. This was to purchase a new body chassis, whatever we're going to use for the dump truck. Under our Crystal Lake Park's improvements, $3,211 paid to Davis for Crystal Lake Park lighting. It's not just Crystal Lake Park, right? This is, this was Nature Center and, I mean, I think it's like a whole area, right?
Album pool, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's, even though I've listed it as Crystal Lake, it's, you know, Nature Center and everybody, too. And this is coming out of a lot of different places. You're going to keep seeing this one over and over. The bottom section, under contingency, $10,880. This was for at Crystal Lake, a non-slip surface that was at the zero depth entry.
Additive for painting, and so the additive in it to make the paint not as slick.
Yeah.
So it's a painting, but it's got the additive into it to make it so it's not slippery.
Alright, moving to 2021 budget. Looks like we have one expenditure at the very bottom in orange. This was $1,089 paid to Mark Starr. This was to do with the railing that we have, the rope and the short posts for--
Woodwinds all riding out.
--casing everybody.
Woodwinds all riding out, so this is every cycloplastic material.
Gotcha. And then, starting at the top for May postings, $3,150. This is another part of Pure I for the website down payment. And then listed under Crystal Lake Park improvements, $48,308 paid to Davis, part of the lighting project. 2020, looks like we have one April expenditure, no May expenditures, listed under Crystal Lake Park, $14,602. This is paid to Open Road for Crystal Lake Road, number six. And 2019, April 1st, the orange numbers first, under Crystal Lake Park improvements, $43,036. Open Road Construction is number nine. Just above that for the May expenditures, $1,921 to Davis for the lighting project, and also $18,706 to Davis under contingency for the lighting project. Over to you, Derek and Kathy for updates. Thank you.
As I said, maybe we should mention the first thing is, if you can notice, the lights are all on and you can see the screen clearly. We have a new projector, a new way for us to project. We can do it wirelessly or, as I have it right now, just HDMI to our laptop. You can do it front and back, which is similar to what it was before, but a lot more flexibility and you can hopefully see things a lot better, even with all our room lights on. This will actually be the same projection system that'll be at the Health and Wellness Center as well. Speaking of Health and Wellness Center, this is the last aerial we have from Core. Probably the most noticeable thing that you often see, you know, at least from the time from our last meeting, is the parking lots have been poured. And in this photo, you can actually see they were actually working on the last main bay here. Pretty nice picture. And then as far as other site work, they're doing curbs, walkways. Hopefully having the drive up to the parking lot done this week. And this is the curb here that's with that kind of access road that goes behind the building. So they'll get all that work done first and come back and do the flat work on it. And then in the gym itself, this is really starting to take shape. So you can see what's really noticeable and exciting are basketball hoops and curtains. A lot of the wall finishes are done. So these circles on top are like soundproofing panels, basically, but they're also provide some, a nice aesthetic to the space as well. And then you can see some, hopefully, a little bit of some accent colors. The painting, wall painting's actually done in the gym here, so there's some green accents on the doors. These are the doors that go into the second floor hallway, into all the fitness rooms. I guess I can point out, this is where we're looking to have the mural within the gym space here. So that's something we're all working with Langston on preparing for. And then this is a view from up top on the track, so you get a little closer look at the basketball hoops themselves. These will be controlled by a touchpad. And, you know, obviously, they'll start at 10 foot, but if we need to drop them, they actually lower on their standard that attaches to the ceiling down to eight feet for the younger kids' basketball program. So a big thing in the gym in the next week or two, they delivered a lot of materials for the wood floor. And so it's basically sitting in there and in the conditioned space for about a week so far, getting accustomed to the environment before they actually start doing the installation, which should occur here pretty soon. And then other kind of items remaining in the gym, the scoreboards and the wall padding will be installed towards the end of the project. So we don't see those yet. But the gym area itself is getting very, very close to being finished. It's actually conditioned with the building's conditioning unit right now.
I'm just like curious, is there like a specific installer for the, like, for the gym floor, like the basketball court floor?
Yeah, there's a specialty group that's a subcontractor of course that's just doing this, the flooring itself here for the-- it'll be actually this floor and the group fitness room floor. They're similar, they're both wood floor, but the group fitness floor is a little bit different, has a little bit more cushion underneath it as well. So it'd be similar to like a Phillips.
Cool.
So this is the first floor, east wing. Drywall's been going up, if not close to completed and taped, and they're actually painting. So this is a look in the staff hallway, looking at what will be Corky's office. And he's got a nice little accent wall.
Nice.
Hey, did you notice the metal doors and frames are orange? Is that a primer or is that the color, pipe of color?
I think that's the color for the trim, the doors are different.
It looks orange, I don't know.
It's like a maroon dark green.
Oh, okay, this looks orange in this picture. Thank you.
Maybe it's our projector system. So second floor, this is kind of similar to what you saw last month. It's, they've been working a lot of rough ends and framing, and they've actually finished a lot of that. This week and last week, it's been a lot of the fire suppression system on the second floor, but they're also putting in the drywall. And so this picture on the left is the drywall. And we are looking at the fitness equipment room. So standing in what I call the middle room, even though they're combined, looking at the corridor. So this would be more of the strength training. And then the room back here would be the cardio equipment. And then this picture here is looking, as you walk into the door, for where all the cardio equipment will be, so on the north side upstairs. And you can see just how many windows, how large the windows are. So there'll be some TVs on this wall over here. But obviously, when you, yeah, you've got treadmills and stuff, you're probably looking out the window just as much, not more. And then this picture I really liked, this is the group fitness room. So this will be all big, you know, the wood floor, and then huge windows here, it's the bird glass. And then there'll be mirrors on the wall that's kind of where the photographer's back to, and then the storage room's over here. So lots of natural light and views from group fitness. Meadowbrook Prairie Play, some paving work was done. This is the path leading up to the pavilion, and then new concrete underneath the pavilion itself. They're looking on starting shingle roof work here very soon. And, well, yeah, did not get a picture in here, but actually, the playground installation group is onsite this week. Yesterday, there was actually a couple posts up on the main 5 to 12 structure. So that's in progress, and I'll try to get a bunch of good pictures for next month. And that's it. And then I just wanted to note with Prairie Play as well, our fifths, pickets, the sales ended on June 1st. There were 230 pickets sold. So Kelsey's working to finalize that list of names, and then we're going to get it to our sales representative, and then he'll do the engraving into the pickets themselves. And we should have it delivered to our contractor in July. We have a total, I might have the number wrong, but like 570 pickets that are needed just for the length of the fence that we need for the site. So there's blank pickets that will be on there. And the sales reps said he'll, we actually ordered extra, too, that he can do some more if we need, if we get a big push as people see the playground going up, that they want to be a part of the project as well. We don't want to leave them out. So on our staff side, you know, we're all working then to look at what's needed purchased. It's outside of the contractor's responsibilities. So we're kind of finalizing items for bike parking-- It's outside of the contractor's responsibilities, so we're kind of finalizing items for bike parking, a bike repair station, bike air pump, and then we have some other items like accessible benches, if we need any more picnic tables, trash and recycling. We're starting to get our ducks in a row on that, so we make sure we have things ready by the time the site is ready to open up. And then last item I had just for an update tonight, there's not a lot of exciting pictures associated with this, but lighting improvements in Crystal Lake Park. So if you drive around and take a look, this is basically what most of the pole light situation is happening. They're waiting on some boxes that may have come in today or, I don't know. So they have the, the footings done and it's all stuffed up where, once they have their junction boxes, they've got the poles and the fixtures, they're gonna come in here and just go ahead and pop them on with a new basis. So they're pretty much ready to go to start installing those. So I just kind of showed a picture. First off, our dilapidated existing lighting poles that are being replaced and then it's ready for the new ones. And then it's actually our staff, the Park District Maintenance Staff, will come in and do the demo of the existing poles, not Davis. That was a cost savings measure we had looked at and worked with Shane and his staff to do. So that should be happening here in the next couple weeks. That's it for my updates. Unless there's any questions or anything, or anything else.
Very excited.
Yeah, number one question I gotta ask. It's gotta be one of the fastest moving projects.
All right, starting out with thanks, just wanted to thank all the full-time and seasonal staff. We have a really trained team this year. All the staff training, everybody getting all the facilities and programs ready to open, open on time and just really grateful for everybody's effort. It's a lot this year. Also wanted to thank, if there's something, Kushter Lomthaw was here. She's not, but I'll send her a note thanking her for connecting Corky and I with Alyssa Mitchell, one of our colleagues from the Human Development and Family Services Department. Opportunity for new interns through that program and as we think about health and wellness and mental health and we talked, gosh, we had over an hour conversation, all the connections and opportunities. So we appreciate every effort and the things that commissions do to get us connected. Next is we often do when the pool is open, we'll ask Corky to keep us updated on the situation with Crystal Lake.
So it's still pretty early and obviously it's, the weather's been hit and miss, right, been kind of cool. Last year, if you remember, I talked a lot about the counter not working when people came through, so our visitation for pool passes was off, so I imagine by, as we move along, we're gonna be like, wow, we got all kinds of people coming in. And then remember last year was a really, really good year, right? So, so far this year, well, same time this, last year, we had 1,038 members, so that's pass holders, come through to yesterday's date. And this year, we have 1,409, so that already looks better than last year because again, we'll be able to track everybody that's coming in and passes. Daily, last year we had 8,493 at this time and this year we're at 4,553, so there's a pretty noticeable difference so far. Overall revenue last year at this time at the gate, so this isn't counting pool passes or any kind of build uses, it's just money paid at the gate. Last year we were at $97,000, this year we're $58,000 so far. So it's been a cool start, had a couple, at least two days I think, and we were closed because of the weather, so.
Heat comes coming.
Looks like it's all gonna change here starting tomorrow, so actually doing this pretty decently as well. So I'll keep you updated as we go through the months.
Just moving on, my report, I think you all that worked, at least in attendance, we call we had a very good study session. Introduced updates on the Weaver Prairie Master Plan process. I did want to update folks, I think we're at our study session, we approved the sled hill for two plus. Staff's looking into getting some more information about the content of the hill, maybe to do some more investigation, but our hope is find out what's in there, if there's someone that can use it, we'll continue to work on that, so. Kickoo rail trail updates, the committee and teams continue to meet. Again, Urbana's starting to focus on our trailhead pavilion at Weaver Park, so we're all splitting off now on our respective projects. Also, the other aspect that we're working on is the land acquisition, the short section that needs to be acquired. I think I updated everyone at the last meeting. We're starting to work with the engineering team to do a couple of things. One is access the site for survey type things, two, you know, get permission to come onto the properties. Also, we could begin discussing any options for leases if we couldn't, you know, find a way to sale. Other things we're likely to need to do is get an updated appraisal. So there's a number of things that are in the works, but our hope is that we'll continue to present ourselves, get response on our offers of purchase, to be able to negotiate from that. So we'll keep you posted. But we're excited about the architectural piece that's coming to Weaver Park, so stay tuned. Obviously it'll be a number of months while they pull plans together and, you know, get things together, but the project's moving ahead. Continuing on, the CUSR group is visiting Fisher in Illinois. We're doing a visit tomorrow, look at their new playground. They have an all-accessible playground, so we want to go take a look at that. Excited about what they've done. As we continue to look at the CUSR center, as you know, we proposed a new playground option at that site in addition to a new safe drop-off. So those are probably two high priority capital improvements projects we're gonna probably start drilling down and focusing. Next one to report, Corky and I and special rec team met with Tom Jones Challenger League. Had a very good meeting, talked about the growth and expansion. Think the part I wanted to elaborate a little more tonight is, I think we mentioned our meeting last time about their interest in another field on the website, but they really could grow this program with an additional field, so. Probably good timing for us, could need another reason to couple some things that are to re-energize that park. But they're very happy. I think we reported, you know, they've had options to relocate, but their home is in Urbana, so I think it'd be very reasonable. You know, down the road if things ever did change, it's not a bad thing to have a wonderful park connected with trails, playgrounds, trees and ball fields, so I think that's a solid there. Just a reminder, June 22nd is J. Rhodes Day and we do have the Peace Pole dedication as the kickoff item there. I think Cedric's gonna lead us, represent us from the Park District, so that'll be at 12 noon sharp that will start. Then the event will carry on after. And I can answer any questions, if anybody has any thoughts. Updated report.
Tim O'Mitchell drove by in Bucks, according to me tonight, the parking lot's completely full for Tom Jones.
Oh, yeah, Tuesdays and Saturdays are working times, so.
I was at the Tom Jones League right before coming here. I have this little video of one of my students. But they, I got ambushed by people.
Good.
Just, I mean, it was great.
It's great. I think we recorded one of our other discussion items was, we know there's a large population there that probably aren't all dialed into our services at CUSR, so if we can sort of cross fertilize our purposes, that would be good.
It was nice talking.
Right. Thank you for going.
Just one other quick thing just for event wise, Juneteenth, I know it's on the calendar that we have here, but it's Sunday, 1/3?
Yep, 1/3.
So yeah, well, moving on to the President's Report instead, I will note some of these upcoming events, which specific Park District events, the J. Rhodes Day, the Juneteenth celebration, as well as like the Neighborhood Nights at Ambucks could be good as well. And then update on the 25th. And there will be no study session in July, but there will be regular board meeting on July 9th. And then we, there are some important things we have to take care of, right? Holding public carrying on by budget appropriation ordinance, adopting a new budget, updating lease agreements for 2008's on the first street. As well as an executive session as well, which I'm assuming that we'll do after, right? That's kind of what we've been doing.
Well, I think what we did, yeah, I mean, I think what we did this last time was, we still had a seven month start and we just dismissed two executive session. I mean, again, I think this one is a fairly, should be a fairly quick one, so.
Excellent.
I don't know that we formally voted on that, but I think that's what we're leaning into.
Okay. Then we'll move forward to liaison reports. Roger, would you like to speak on the finance side?
We met at the end of May and really covered most of what we talked about in terms of the master plan and the situation with the excess soil at Prairie Park. And then we have a building situation that you already know about. But that's an ongoing discussion, so that was pretty much it.
Okay. And then up for the PD Policy Study Group, that's where I'm aware that there's not yet meeting again until.
Yeah, Alex and I are gonna be working on, it's really quite a housekeeping list, nothing like dramatically or big policy changes or anything like that, but a lot of it's a housekeeping stuff, so.
Cool, I look forward to it. And then Roger, would you like to speak on the first foundation?
Yeah, the Park Foundation welcomed a new member, Linder, that's one of you may be familiar with. Judy Miller, who came on fairly recently, who lives in Ohio, so she's a leader, there's another opening on the board. Something I was very excited to hear was that the Park District Foundation, the Park Foundation has applied for a community foundation capacity building grant, which is like, but what it is, is to help you build your capacity and carry out the mission. And what they're gonna be doing with the grant soon that they get it for $5,000 is to look at their internal processes and procedures so that they might be able to move forward on developing really their first strategic plan. So that is exciting. The other thing in terms of calendaring, you might want to make sure that you have June 29th, that's a Saturday, from 9 to noon, that is going to be the annual brunch, our first annual brunch. And I'll be taking a bus trip around to the various projects that donors have given. The idea is to get donors to look at what their dollars have purchased and for people maybe who haven't or haven't realized what's possible, to give them ideas for other things, so.
That was it. Well, there were a lot of questions, so.
Thank you. And then update, planning study group?
We just met, met with you again a couple of weekends ago.
Yep, okay. So then move forward to old business, there was none. So then we look forward to new business, the first of which is to receive the fiscal year 2024-2025 Combined Budget and Appropriation Orders.
I don't have much to add to this. This is a, it's an annual, it's an annual step and it's a requirement for us to have to post it for 30 days prior to us actually accepting it. That's why we saw on the July agenda, the actual adoption and accession of both the budget itself and the budget appropriation ordinance. So it currently is posted at the office as required and will be available for 30 days for anybody to review, inspect, ask questions, whatever they feel. And again, I'm not sure what we, if we want to talk about line items here, I don't think we typically do that, but the reason why you guys got an update was because there were just a couple of changes that needed to be made. So what you receive today is your current, what's posted is current, what's on our website is current. And I mean, I think typically we talk a little bit about the budget process, you know, how we get here. It starts, you know, pretty late in the fall every year and it starts with our staffs, you know, the managers, what each of their programs and departments needs are, those, you know, move over to superintendent's plates and they do their pieces early in the year, January, February. It's finalizing those, waiting for a finalized levy from the county, which seems to not be super, super consistent when we get that number. This time it was mid-April, so actually preliminary budget had already been presented to you all when we got that. And so, and the salaries then are not voted on, right, by the board until April. So those are really the two biggest pieces of things that changed from our preliminary that you all see in April to what we finalize in July and typically not a whole lot changes there. And we do typically share and talk about the inner, the, you know, budget transfers that we do every year. They're pretty standard, they don't really change much, you know, from year to year. We know that museum and rec helped the general fund so that the general fund can pay and help the bond fund, you know. So it's a lot of that type of movement. So there's nothing, no $2.2 million general fund transfer this year, at all. No million dollar one either, so nothing new, unusual, different there. And all of the salaries and wages have been updated in the budget that you'll see in July final and all the tax numbers are brought up to speed. And I think we already shared the, you know, health and wellness budget and we were very pleased, I think, with the outcome of that and looking forward to seeing how that really rolls out at the end of this year, so. That's all I wanted to tell on the budget and the ordinance. Does you all have any questions?
I moved to accept the fiscal year.
Oh, sorry.
No action on this one. Oh, that's the no action one.
Put that in your book for next month.
You have, you have priority now.
There you go.
I loved it, Roger, I was like, okay, cue, okay.
It was your turn, but not for this.
Also, then, so now we move forward to Acton Resolution 2024-07, which is to accept the fiscal year 2024-2025 CUSR.
Do you want me to review that real quick where we're at?
I was just gonna mention first, I think Jared Shandon came last April, if you recall, we went through the entire budget. I think Corky and I shared sort of our aspects of our sort of EDA approach to some projects and we like sort of dialed in on that. But just a reminder, Champagne is Park District's administrative organization, so they actually prepare the budget, work through their finances, we assess a review, comment, and then we accepted it out of show of solidarity, typically Cork and I.
That was just, I was just, sorry. Every year we come back to this, we're like, what was our process with this? So we just wanted, we got, we're all together on how it should work. Tim's kind of went through the process here, so now we know exactly how we want to do it each year. We've had some issues in the past years getting the budget information to us on time, which I think has kind of started, started a different process over the past year. So now we have a process down, like Tim said, it's CPD is the administrator. So they approve, well, they bring it to us. That's our opportunity when Jared was here to say, hey, why is this? Why is that? We'd like to see that changed. That's our time to really talk about what we want to see different, if anything. Of course, Tim and I are always a part of that whole team and we're always seeing the information month after month, week after week. So yeah, today, we have a resolution here just stating that we agree with it. The other piece, the part that you all approve is in our budget, right? So we have the CUSR money that comes through us and then goes for the administration of the program area. So that's really the piece that is like. So that's really the piece that is like, Urbana Park District approves these dollars. So I just wanted to make sure we walked through that process a little bit so that we're all on the same page.
They have their own fund on our books and all that tax money comes in and every distribution is immediately sent right back out to Champagne. We write a check and it's cleared right out. And I think if you guys recall in April, I did mention that, you know, the reason why CUSR usually budgets every year to zero, because we know what the tax dollars are and we turn them all back around as an expenditure to Champagne. But this year I had a negative fund balance because I had a positive fund balance last fiscal year because there was interest and that wasn't budgeted for, right? So I held that fund balance over to this and we've already paid that out to them as soon as we got past the first of the new year. So a little bit different, but that money is, it's straight passed through in their own fund and they get it all.
Another point to remind you all too, some of our urban and suburban special rec associations actually have taxing authority. So we have a joint program. There's other places in Illinois where they actually, they're essentially a part of this year. They let the attacks, you know, they do all the steps, Lord, just our, ours is different. So we have a lead agency. We've flipped it over the years, the UPD has been the lead agency to prepare the budget as described. So it's gone back and forth, but just want to make sure we're all tracking differences of different organizations and how we do it locally.
All right. I move to accept the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget for the Champagne, Urbana Special Rec Program as described in the attached between.
Second, moved in secondly, and roll call vote. Roll call, starting with you, Roger.
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. All right. So then moving to, see, actually approved an agreement for fabrication of sculptural benches.
So this is a, so we've been working with our icon for a while and until we're sure how many donors we're gonna have, we want to see this require board approval, but we have eclipsed the board approval mark with the four proposed benches that we're, I think all proved tonight. They're all truly works of art and so it doesn't, it almost succeeds a traditional bid threshold, it doesn't qualify for bidding, it would be impossible to bid, you know, sculptural work. So we'd be happy to answer your questions you might have, but we recommend approval of the four benches for a total of $33,500 with a 10% contingency of $3,350.
Just, I don't know, do you have a picture of them?
We do, yeah. You were there.
Picture of them, you know.
It's not going to affect the vote.
If I like them.
Jim Palucci is the artist. Known of Jim's work for a long time and he actually had one of his pieces in our 1025 show. When we started talking about the playground and that piece, we can sort of back the benches.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
It would be a real wild factor, I think.
Yeah.
In addition to the mixing.
Minor bench, does it talk to some of the ends there?
Oh my gosh, that's gorgeous.
Are there dragonfly beds?
And these will be within the.
Playground area, correct?
Playground area, yeah. Inside of fence, I assume.
Are they actually gonna be a teal color?
They are.
Yeah. We got it to match.
Oh my gosh.
Everything will black on, just beautiful.
People are gonna be so excited about it.
They surely will.
Not now because we showed them on TV already. But we're glad you got a sneak peek.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's awesome. Those are actually really awesome.
Okay, I move that we approve the agreement for fabrication of four sculptural benches in the amount of $33,500 with a 10% contingency with Jim Palucci of Jim Palucci Sculptor LTV of Greensboro in scene.
I second.
That moves in secondly, and roll call vote, starting with you, Roger.
Aye.
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 That is passed unanimously. And then we'll move to actually accept gift agreement for donation.
Gift agreement on the, in the packet tonight, I think I've shared with you and shared the book that got passed around at previous meetings, you can take another look at it if you'd like. But the artist is Michael Schumacher, who reached out to us, as you recall, he's a Jacksonville, Illinois native, had an associate that is from Urbana that had told him about all the great things at the Wondell. And so I think he was just motivated, contacted us, been offered to make a piece, we kind of negotiated, walked through all the aspects of it. One of the more challenging piece was the base. How do we get a nice base? And I think the end result was a recommendation that he would fabricate the base also. Part of the agreement is that's the portion the UPD would pay, that's the $9,200 that's included in the agreement. We thought that was a very reasonable cost. Obviously we'll have the installation and our plan is to have it dedicated at Jazz Park and the plan is to come here to be your dedication. So it's a very, you know, unique opportunity. We haven't done this before. He's in Hawaii, so the distance, you know, is interesting. But we've seen the piece, I think, Andy, did you show that piece yet? Michael Schumacher.
That, yeah. Did everybody see that?
That, thank you. That's the keys, that's continuum and that's gonna be the forged stainless steel, so it will be shut, you know, under shine. You kind of see that lower, yeah, where it's been polished right there. Yeah, exactly. So it's gonna be really, really amazing. We've got a fantastic site picked out. I think it's gonna be a real addition to the garden.
Do you know where?
There are people to describe where, how would you best describe?
It's not too far from the apple sculpture. It's a little bit further to the southwest, as I recall, there's an opening in some of the caps of the river bridge. We'll place it. It's actually part of the factory right now there that we're gonna go out, so. Yeah, we briefly looked at like a, kind of a granite type base with a granite veneer on concrete and the cost is just going up and up and up. And when we talked to Michael, he actually recommended you know this space because it has a different treatment, so the container will be very offset from the stainless steel and will show well. Plus it's guaranteed to work, you know, it's gonna become prefabricated for the sculpture.
Right. That took a huge worry, I'm sure, of us, you know, we could probably coordinate fabrication, but we still have to have the two pieces meet literally in the middle and attached properly. So the fact that they'll be put together, it'll be shipped to us in a container and coordinate the installation. That would also help feature the sculpture, you know, that's installed. And so it'll be a nice kind of a bookend piece for Jazz Walk and maybe it'll start an opportunity, well, we'll hear from other high-quality artists in the future, but we're thrilled to have it. It'll be a beautiful addition.
So I move the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners accept the gift agreement with Michael Schumacher for donation of the sculpture continuum.
Second, moved in secondly, and roll call vote, starting with a few more.
Aye.
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 That is passed unanimously. Then I guess at this point we'll look for any comments from Commissioners?
I just gotta say you guys are doing a great job because I've been trying, I've got, trying to hit a park a day, every day, from dawn. And we did King Park, Hospital on there, we, every Monday as we go to Metta Brook. But anyway, I'm just so amazed by all the people I'm seeing in the park and all the wonderful things, programs you guys have done. Thank you very much. Tell your staffs, thank you.
Well, then that, I guess I think that covers everything, so I'll call it adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.